Welcome, everybody. We've got a rather long prayer request list tonight, so we'll go through it. We need to remember Ms. Suzie Woodard, her brother-in-law's had a blood clot in his brain that is inoperable. Need to remember Donna Kimp, her husband had surgery. Denise Locke, her mother's sick. Need to remember Ms. Debbie Fulton, she's recovering from surgery. Jennifer Cook, mother had brain surgery and her father's not well either. Amanda Jenkins, her baby's due next month. Lucinda Sharp, sister passed away. Marie Wiser had knee replacement. Chase Rainey at Smith County Middle, need to remember him. And Joe Taylor has another new grandbaby. And that's everyone I have on the prayer request list. Are there any others that we need to mention? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. To heaven and father, what a blessing it is to be able to be given another day of life, Father, for the health we have. We know from listening to this prayer request list, there are many that don't have this health that we're offered today, and we just want to pray, Father, that you'll be with them, that you'll comfort them, and if it be your will, that you'll help them to get back to their much-wanted health. Father, we always want to be prayerful for this school system. Father, we pray each and every time that we're in here, Father, for the school system, and we just always want to do that, Father, because this is one of the most important things in our life, is to raise our children up the way they need to be raised, Father, and we just want to pray that we do that, and we know we have great teachers here and we have great examples, and we just thank you so much for that. Father, we want to pray now that you'd be with us, all of us, each day of our lives, and Father, we just want to thank you for your son. It's his name we offer this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's start with some school updates. We'll begin with defeated elementary. Ms. Cook?
Thank you all for the opportunity. I apologize ahead of time, I'm a little cruddy up and under the weather. Our enrollment this year is 245, so it's actually down just a little bit. It was 245 today, that changes every week. New this year to the building, we have Ms. Katie Wheeler, she is teaching third grade. She was there several years and she left, and she's come back. Amber West has been hired for kindergarten, and Kimmy Bush is the pre-K assistant. Our test scores this year, we were very pleased with our T cap scores. We were actually a tenth of a point away from being a reward school. So, we have tried to look and see what we could do to improve that, and with that being said, we feel that reading needs to be our focus, so we are really focusing on reading this year. Trying to find the enjoyment for kids reading, trying to find their love of reading. So, we have implemented A R goals every nine weeks. We are actually going to be doing one tomorrow afternoon. We're going to be skating, and some of the older kids are going to walk across the road and go take them fishing. And then we're also going to be implementing a literacy day. We're going to do that on Thursday, school-wide. All the teachers are going to be seeing each child throughout the building, we're going to rotate, they're going to be doing reading activities, incorporating writing with that, some hands-on projects, and we're actually going to let all the kids make a smore. I think maybe, there's probably kids that's never got to do that, so we're excited to let them make smores tomorrow. And as they're making smores, they're going to get a buddy read with a student in a bigger grade. For the last several weeks, we have been, or the last two and a half weeks, we've been roller skating in P E, so that's been a real excitement for the kids. I didn't realize how few kids could roller skate until we've been doing that through our P E class. Third and fourth grade basketball, the county tournament was this past Saturday. Our girls and boys both won the tournament. We were excited, both teams went undefeated through the season. K two ended last Saturday, and we had lots of participation, all kinds of little ones were playing basketball. Our beta club is preparing to attend convention at Oprion Hotel in November. We will, our regular basketball season with varsity in fifth and sixth grade, we will open up on October the 22nd with red bowling. We have, we will be having a, one reason for us doing a literacy day in the daytime, we were trying to find a day, and with basketball and football and fall ball, there was a lot of conflict, so we wanted every kid to get to be able to come, so that's why we were going to incorporate it during the day. And then in the spring, we will do a STEM night, where we incorporate some hands-on activities and science experiments. We did that last year, and it was a great turnout, so we'll do that again in the spring. Our seventh and eighth grade recently attended the career day that the county put on, and it was, it was a big success, lots of comments, lots of compliments. The kids, already leading them to asking questions, and their hopes are that by the time they're juniors and seniors, they've been going to career day four, five, and six times, so they've seen enough, they know what questions to ask, and then they have a better selection of a career choice when they're ready, juniors and seniors, to make those decisions. We have been doing a lot of community involvement this last month with our lower grades, community helpers has been their unit, so the sheriff's department has been, the fire department has been, the EMS has been, so we've had lots of good turnout with that. For some improvements around the building this summer, we, the gym was painted and the halls have been painted, and then there's been several teachers that have painted their classrooms over the summer, so those all look great. With our STEM night, there is lots of hands-on manipulatives, and we have already, we incorporate that through our science classes and learning labs. So, there's a lot of project-based learning and experiments that the kids are doing in class. With that, there's a lot of technology, so we, last spring, we bought another Chromebook cart, so that ratio gets us up, we're about to two to one, and we're hoping to get another one with our title money this year to even condense that on down, and maybe once we have junior pro in the spring, we would like to purchase another one. And again, junior pro is our, it's the only fundraiser we do for the school, so we invite, if you know any little ones that like to play ball, send them to defeated. As far as other things, I know that other principals have mentioned, we do four-eight, we've got our interventions, all of that is the same county-wide, but, you know, probably the main focus we've been working on since school started for this year is reading, and just trying to find, it seems like so much has been push, 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 and it seems like the kids have lost their love for reading. So, we've been trying to do whatever we can to find that interest, so hopefully with our A R reward tomorrow, and then our literacy day Thursday, we will get some excitement, and the ones that didn't get the reward, hopefully by the time we do something at Christmas, I've even told them I would sleep on the roof if I needed to, or take a pie in the face, so whatever works. Do you all have any questions?
Okay, well, thank you again. Actually, we have a scrimmage at six, so while I was actually starting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Now, we'll go to Fort River Elementary, and Ms. Pope.
Thanks for having me tonight. Our enrollment is up this year. We enrolled another student today that put us back at two on one, and like defeated, it kind of fluctuates every week, but we're up at two on one today, and we welcome several new staff members this year, too. Last year, our kindergarten split kind of halfway into the year, and Ms. Susan Myers joined us, and so I didn't get to welcome her last year, but I wanted to include her because our kindergarten was split again this year, and so she is with us again, and we're happy to have her. Ms. Paula Gibbs retired, and Audrey Hackett took her place, she's a Smith County native, and she is also our cheer coach, and she's done fabulous things with them so far, and they're doing a lot of stunts and tumbling, and I'm looking forward to seeing our cheerleaders this year, she's done some great things with them. She's teaching fourth grade. Ms. Nancy Mams came back home to us after a year at Smith County High School last year, and she's teaching fifth and sixth grade math and science, and she's been doing lots of great STEM activities since she's been with us. Just this month, they made a catapult out of popsicle sticks and a plastic spoon, and they shot marshmallows down the hall, they made glow-in-the-dark slime, and then they made solar-powered ovens and made smores outside with their ovens, so they're doing lots of great science activities in fifth and sixth grade. Ms. Snowy Broom joined our special ed department from Carthage Elementary, and we are happy to have her with us as well. We also have made several building improvements this summer. We did some extensive concrete work in the back and then leading to the playground, so the kids don't have to ever walk through the mud or grass to get out there. And we also rebuilt the bridge going over to the playground, it was in need of some repair. We have ordered new gymnasium wall pads. Currently, we have just five under each goal, and they're pretty worn, so we're going to extend that to ten under each goal to make it a little safer for the student athletes, and also to improve the look of the gym. And something that, I've got some pictures for you and videos today, where in the middle of this project, we are painting our blacktop where the basketball goals are outside with some sensory pathways and alternative activities for the kids when they're playing outside, besides playing on the playground, walking the track, shooting basketball. And so we've got several different ones, and sensory pathways increase cognitive development, and they use all of their senses like sight and thinking and movement and balance to do the different activities on the playground. Got hopscotch and twister, the jumping, that's, we do that at field day, so they could practice outside and have some math along with that. And we're doing lots of other building improvements, so we also painted lots of classrooms and done some inside work as well. Academically, we just finished our first nine weeks, and today was our awards ceremony. Every report card day, we recognize all the students who have made academic achievements, and the parents are invited to come, we do that at two o'clock, and so you're welcome to come any report card day to see that. We recognize most improved student, honor roll, principal's list, perfect attendance, that kind of thing. So, we had that today, and we also recognized our accelerated readers and took some pictures and things like that. On October the 29th, we will kick off our Forts River Basketball Tournament. It's over 50 years old, and it is a good way for all of you to come out and see a glimpse of all the county teams that will be participating in that, and you can see kind of how the basketball season's going to start out. Our Lady Bulldogs will be defending their back-to-back-to-back county championship, and we're excited about that. We have zero eighth-grade girls this year, so it'll be tough to maintain that they've been working hard. Our third and fourth grade, fifth and sixth grade, and seventh and eighth grade, boys and girls, both participated in the Upper Cumberland Fall League at Coopel High School, and that was a great start to our basketball season, and we're looking forward to the regular season, starting when we come back from fall break. We have also been roller skating in P E for the past three weeks, and it's, we'll finish that up Thursday, and it's super fun to watch, the kids learn how to skate, and now that we're at the end, they're a lot better than when we started, like Ms. Cook said. It's surprising how many kids have not ever been roller skating, and it's great exercise, and they have lots of fun doing it. And when we come back from fall break, we will kick off our red ribbon celebration, and we'll be promoting healthy choices and drug prevention all week. We've already started our door decorating contest, and each door will be decorated in a drug-free theme, and if you come to parent-teacher conference on Thursday, you can vote for your favorite door, and the classroom that has the best door gets a party, so I know they would love for you to come and vote for them, so that they can get that party. I'd love for you to come visit anytime, you're welcome, come see what's going on at Forts River, there's lots of great things to see, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Pope. Okay, let's move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCaglin, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do we have our superintendent actions? And we'll move on to our new business A. This is Policy Amendment 4.700, testing programs, and this is the final reading. Do we have a motion on new business B?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B, this is Policy Amendment 4.600, grading system, and this is also a final reading. Do we have a motion on new business B?
So moved.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCaglin, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C, this is a Chromebooks purchase request from the technology department. Do we have a motion on new business C?
So moved.
Mr. Shoulders, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion?
Yes. How close are we to be one-on-one with Chromebooks throughout the county? Or various folks like K C right now? And by the end of the year, we'll be really close to one-on-one.
Through K eight or through K twelve?
We'll be closer, but every child should have access to computers, not a hundred percent of them, but really close, I'll get you some exact numbers.
I think it's important if we try to get one-on-one. I noticed, we was defeated, so they was two to one right now, and I know some schools are already closer to one. I was just asking. We met some people that's really helpful, I think.
Ms. Bobby?
I need to work on that. Did she say that, that she does this too? She had that just last week.
She collected the numbers on that, but I didn't see.
I'll see if I can get it from her, and then you get it before it ends.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bobby. Any more discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business D, this is the fiscal year 19 coordinated school health grant approval. Do we have a motion on new business D?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? If not, it also involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Let's move on to new business E. This is the fiscal year 19 family resource centers grant approval. Do we have a motion on new business E?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Lewis, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCaglin, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business F, this is a request approval for an emergency purchase for a gas convection steamer for the cafeteria at Union Heights Elementary School Nutrition. Do we have a motion on new business F?
So moved.
Ms. Moore?
Second.
Do we have a second? Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business G, bid approval for gasoline, do we have a motion on new business G? Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. McCaglin, any discussion? If not, we'll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Now, let's begin some discussion. We'll start with class rank, and Mr. Smith, I'll let you take this.
I've got, we've got both the principals here, so I won't let you shake that, let them talk, but I think our system's been fair in the past, but I think, and it's, it's nothing against, and I'm not talking about anybody's IQ level, but I think if you're not in the school system and you don't understand, you start waiting this, and you start as the average person, it's not transparent then. And we've made it very clear that we've even had a third, not only a principal, it's a major central office, but we've had a third party that's come in also and verified it, and always came up with the same score, but I think as a parent, if I could sit down and we had a better formula that the public could keep up with, that it was made assurance to everybody it was fair for the poorest kid in their county, or the richest kid in their county, or one thing that, and everybody gets got, well, you know, this was a staff member or a teacher, you had an advantage, you knew to take this course, well, you know, I just think anytime you can be more transparent, you create a better relationship. Also, with that, looking at something that lines up better with scholarships and that colleges can boot right up to us and understand, and they've worked on this quite a bit, let them talk and say, well, we've got a principal meeting tomorrow, I think, I guess, we're just talking about something we could do to get more scholarships, have more kids, make us seem more transparent, so that you can keep up with your child yourself and not feel like you had to hire an accountant to do that. You have more weigh-in?
Well...
We're just talking about what's good or bad, or don't work, or works, or what you'd like to see.
It's extremely complicated, and that's, from someone that's working in the school system as a teacher, and even as an administrator, when I became principal, and I think about calculating top 10 or valedictorian, slatorian, that seems like that shouldn't be that complicated process, and we're all used to, when we were in school, you've got a grade for a class, you've got the averages, and all those together, and it's just not, it's just not that simple anymore, not in the way Shane and I were in high school, it was pretty much, I think pretty much everywhere, I didn't go to school in Smith County, but you may have taken 20 courses in high school, you've got the average for it, they averaged all those together, added them up, and took an average, and however that fell, that's how they ranked them over your four-year high school career. And over time, in Smith County and lots of other places, we've tried to make that an equal-level playing field, to make the more difficult classes wait more, and as time has progressed, we've got lots of more and more of them. We've got dual credit classes, you know, students have all kinds of opportunities now, where they can take classes to the Ball State, Tennessee Tech, and honors classes, and we've tried to weight those so that the more difficult course load, you get more credit for that than, than say the less stringent classes. But over time, you know, we've got kids, we've got 24 credits required for graduation, but those seniors that graduate, some of those kids may have taken 30 different classes, some of them may have taken 32. You know, some kids can, may be able to afford to take more dual enrollment classes that other kids may not. We've, in the system that the previous school boards have put in place, we've tried to make it as fair as possible, but it gets really, really complicated when, the way the system is set up, our guidance counselors go in, they get credit for the 24 graduation requirements. And I wouldn't go into all that different, basically, they have four math classes that count towards their class rank. Well, a student may have taken seven math classes, so it's kind of on our guidance counselors to look through their transcripts to make sure that they've picked the ones that'll give them the highest average. That's a lot of pressure to put on, you know, in Shane's case, one guidance counselor, and I look at it, too, but they, my guidance counselor's loose sleeve for the two or three weeks prior, they're trying to make sure that they haven't made any mistakes, and they do a wonderful job, it's just, it's hard to do, and I don't want to do all the talking, Shane, you try them in whenever you want to, but the other thing is, I think sometimes it almost hurts our kids in a way, because when I was in high school, you were the valedictorian or slatorian, you might get a full ride scholarship to Cumberland or Tennessee Tech. These universities just don't do that anymore, and I think it hurts our students with local scholarships, because a lot of times these local groups, you know, we make those announcements about top 10 and valedictorian, slatorian, and a lot of groups will see those names, and they'll assume, they'll get applications for them, and that they were the top of their class, and they'll just assume because they're valedictorian, slatorian, that they're getting scholarship money from whatever university went to, and they may not be getting anything. Those scholarships now are more based on ACT and SAT scores and GPA figures in there, but it's not near the emphasis that it used to be on being first in your class. So, I, me and Shane have talked, I'd love to see something similar to what colleges do. There's a range of GPA, that Latin system, you know, when you went to college, you were, you could graduate with honors, magna cum laude, sum cum laude, you know, those different things, and I, I think we could give an opportunity to recognize more kids. I'm not for the, let's hand out everybody a trophy, but it just puts a lot of pressure on kids, pressure on our guidance counselors, and something else I want to add, too, we've got, there's nothing wrong with the competition part of it, but somebody, Mr. Smith was talking about, if you're, if you work in the school system, or if you've had kids that have gone through high school previously, you've got a, and it's in our handbook, I mean, we hand all these out to every kid and every parent, we're happy to answer any question we possibly can for any parent or student, but if you start looking at it, if your goal is to be valedictorian, there's a, there's a path of coursework you can take, they'll give you a better shot at it. You've got to take those higher-ranked classes, the higher-point total classes, and, you know, if a parent or kid doesn't come in, we will sit down with them on the first day and tell 150 freshmen, this is the path to be valedictorian, and we just, we don't do it, we'll answer any question anybody has, but if you have, if you're a little more familiar with it, you can figure out what's going to give you, and there's nothing wrong with that, but I've got students, and I, that I've talked to, that may be interested in going into the healthcare field, may think they want to be a doctor or a nurse, and they may not take the health science classes, or some of those, because they don't have as much point total. It won't help them as much toward valedictorian, but, because they need to take this five-point class, because they want to be ranked high in the class. So, I, I think if we tweaked it a little bit, we might have kids taking more classes that they're interested in, instead of just whatever I can get to get the highest average. And I'm all about competition, but I think it's... I think it'll help the ACT, I'm hoping it would help the ACT sports, too. Just to give you a quick example, last year, we were practicing graduation, and the top 10 sitting on front row, and we were practicing, and the discussion comes up about the top 10, and all of these, this whole class is, it's really only the top three. That whole class knew that they could go take the ACT five more times or 10 more times, and they never was going to be in the top three, because that was being battled out. But if those kids knew that they had to make two extra points on ACT to make the next step in that system, in that Latin system, whatever it is, I believe those kids will go back and do that, and there's a, there's a big difference in monies, I wish some of our guidance counselors were here to, you go from a 26 to a 28, that's different monies that parents get. I don't think the students may understand that. If you go to 28 to 30, that's really a lot of money. Plus, we are held accountable, on the high school level, is ACT score, I mean, I think 2020 is supposed to be an average of 21, Ms. Bobby? Somebody help me that? So, you know, we would hope those kids who are making 12 and 14, there's knowing they're those kids who are probably not going to college. So, we've got to find a way to get those kids who making 25s and 26s to try to take the ACT test again to have some incentive to score higher on that. So, I would think it might help in that situation also. And, you know, I've only been, this is my second year back at the high school, but it is a, as Mr. Towns said, I think our guidance counselor wants to leave when that top 10 has to be figured, because it's a lot of undue pressure on her, and also, the other thing that I've seen was, there's a lot of kids...
And also the other thing that I've seen was, there's a lot of kids that can't afford to take dual enrollment credits, and some people could get as many as four or six, they can use four or six, so some, some kids are not going to have a fair shot at that. And then our board policy says ACT score counts twenty percent, but it's, it's really not a true twenty percent, it's on a scale score, which means, means really very dual, to be honest with you. So I think that it, I think that it would be a larger incentive to more students to try to get those other distinctions that would possibly help our schools, both high schools in the future with ACT scores and more kids getting, as Mr. Towns said, with some more scholarships. I will, I mean, I'll try to answer any question, I don't know how much you know and have read about it or anything you, concerns you may have. I know we've talked about it, that quarters will live through, and some parents, they don't want to lose that distinction of the valedictorian and salutatorian process, but, you know, three years ago, the valedictorian at Gwarson didn't even get a scholarship. All he got was a whole scholarship, he had a thirty-two on his ACT, he got a whole scholarship, didn't get anything, no local money, no anything, which I think that's, that just kind of blew my mind that that happened, but he, he didn't get anything but the whole. So, you know, I would have thought, local people would have gave a guy some scholarship money if he made a thirty-two, but when you get to answering questions, as Tim says, those businesses assumed, and those people assumed that, you know, you make thirty-two on the ACT, you go to University of Tennessee, you're getting a free ride. That, that's not the case anymore, it just doesn't happen that way.
Have you all sat down enough to get kind of ranges of these?
I think that Latin system is, we didn't kind of sit out?
It's already set out.
I think it's kind of.
Okay, so it's kind of, you, you have a.
It's, it's pretty much like set for you.
So you don't have. Okay.
Most of the ones that I've looked at are, I pulled one up that, that they were looking at in Wilson County, I don't think they went there or not, but I remember when I was in college at University of Tennessee, there's the highest ranking was like a three point eight, two to a four, and then the minimum was a three point five, you know, to get any recognition, and whatever layer, I think three point.
I think that's the standard, that sounds, that sounds familiar with the standard.
Three point five to like three point seven five was one, then three point seven five to like a three eight five, then three eight five and up, you know, and a three different. I, I, and I don't have a perfect answer for what that needs to look at, to look like, but I think, you know, those, those, those ten kids or the three, or they may be, you know, every year they're a little bit different. Sometimes there, there's two that are really close, sometimes there's three or four that are really, but, but all those, those top four or five kids, really, you know, it could, it could come down to things, you know, at my high school, I've got, I may have two teachers teaching, you know, the same subject when they were freshmen, or, you know, you, sometimes it comes down to, well, I just was more fortunate and had this person instead of this person. Sometimes it comes down to things like that. We try to take all that out of it, but you can't, you just can't remove all that. And in those ranges, you're going to, you're going to be recognizing the same kids, you know, you're going to have those elite, top level kids, it's just, instead of separating one and two, there may be a group of five or six.
And guidance counselors, guidance counselors spend hours in that age figuring at your school the bottom, I mean, they're figuring, their, their class ranking, everybody from one to at Gwarson, it's eightish, there it's a hundred people, so they're spending oodles amount of time that's really unnecessary for those, for them to, to do that, so, you know, and we thought.
Those highest ranked students sit like on the front row, I mean, you still have the, like your top ten at graduation.
There'll be distinctions.
You still have that very highest group of students with, with their distinction, so to speak.
And we thought, and I don't, we would have to start that with next year's freshman if we proceeded through, and we can't, we can't.
No, you can't, no. That would be a nightmare.
We would have to do a good job of communicating that to next year's freshman, the changes, and then that, that would, would be working with two different systems for the next three years, so, you know, it's what we would envision, I guess.
How would, you know, if you change to that kind of system, how would that eliminate the, I mean, it looks like to me that there's still going to be weighting, you know, that would have to take place with your, you know, five-point classes, six-point classes, four-point classes, or whatever. How does that factor in? Would you just be inclusive of every class at that point, or how, how would that work, I guess?
I don't know that we've got that far.
Well, you have to get educated, that's what. We have to find some people that do.
I guess, let me ask, let me ask a better question. You're, in moving or transitioning to that system, a weighted system so that the kids that are taking your AP classes and dual enrollment classes are getting credit for a harder class versus just a regular, I just want out of high school, give me a diploma.
My personal thoughts on it, yeah, you continue with that, we wouldn't go away with the weighted classes and things like that, it's just, right now, we're narrowing it down to one and then two, you know what I mean?
Sure.
In this instance, it just gives more opportunity for more, at least that's how I envision.
So I guess if you, if you talk about the ACT and your grades and the way they're weighted, you know, dude, you're on a five-point system, four-point whatever, you could say a four, you've got a kid that's a three point nine, and he can go take the ACT and make one or two extra points to get them over to the first overall, to get in that. That's what we're looking, that we think those higher, or I believe those higher academia kids that's going on in college, would tend to go back and try to take that ACT test again, you know, and, and Tim had said that they've done some things, that kids think you got to make, you got to answer fifteen different questions to go up two points, but I think that they found out in some instances, it might not, it may only be three or four questions. If you can identify those questions on that test to help get that kid to, from twenty-six to twenty-eight, or twenty-four to twenty-six, you're going to be able to, to help that kid in, as a parent with two kids and still eleven dollars extra.
Well, it puts them in a position to compete with themselves more than those with their classmates.
Yeah, and, and I guess it's out there, they know, they know that I'll take these five-point classes and make this on ACT, or I may be able to make lower on ACT, but take more dual enrollment classes. They'll have different avenues and different ways, and both the ACT and dual enrollment is going to benefit them as they travel through their collegiate careers, you know, so. But we struggle to get kids to make, you know, I look back at our ACT scores, when you, you have a class of seventy-two and fifteen of them make the low fourteen, they make twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, we give them two again, they make twelve, thirteen, or fourteen, they don't have any incentive, so it takes four or five of those academia kids that, that are interested in that to pull that twelve or fourteen to a twenty when you start averaging those things. So that's the, that's the people I think we have to focus on the way the system is now, to try to get the, the kids that need to make a twenty-eight, you know, a kid that's going to TCAT, we can't convince him he needs to make twenty-eight on the ACT to go to TCAT. I mean, that's, he's, they know they're allowed to do that. But to get into engineering class or get into nursing school, or those kids may go back and, we may have some incentive to, you know, I guess, to drive them on to make them, to take in different classes that may help them in the future with their chosen future.
I guess I envision, or what I would like to see is, the board decides to change something, is to make it very stringent, you know, right now, if our average ACT score was, for both high schools, were a third, and we had just every student had an A in every class, we'd still just have one valedictorian and one salutatorian in our system, we're still just have a top ten, you know. I'd love to see, let's, let's make it very stringent, very difficult, we may only have two kids that make that top level, whatever the board decides that needs to be, and then in five years, maybe we've got eight kids that's, and more than ten kids or twelve kids that, that we'll recognize as the best of the best, you know, not a system where we recognize all hundred and fifty of them. I think it's, it's still, we need to, we need to make it, you know, a standard of excellence, but, you know, right now, I mean, I don't have any kids in each incoming freshman class that's got a shot at being top ten, but that, that percentage probably goes down a little bit every year as they move through high school, just knowing how they made, and this might be something that, well, I may not have a shot to be that highest level, but I've got a shot to be, you know, the magna cum laude, or, you know, the one, the cum laude, you know, something like that, so, I, I don't know, I, I guess me and him see the benefits of it, there's probably some negatives to changing, you know, I think communication, because that's, that's what we've done forever, you know, that's what we know, that's, that I think that there is a bit of a challenge.
Sounds like there's a little bit more research to be done, to kind of figure.
I think we have a plan just to give tonight, we just, I guess, probably wanted to know if you all might be receptive to doing something like that, or, or might have some information on it that we can do.
I mean, I guess we want to go do hours worth of research, and you guys know that you're not going to, you know, you're not open to getting away from that system that we have.
Well, I, Mr. Director, if I could just say something to you here, I, I'm receptive to, just from the one praise that I heard you say, some child got left out. That, that's enough for me to be receptive to anything that you bring to this board that's going to help one child, because if we can do anything to help one, then we've accomplished something. So for me, it's worth my time, your time, whatever time, or whatever it is you'd ask of me today, if it benefits one child out there somewhere, then we've done our duty. That's why I'm such.
I guess the only question I got, I, I kind of see where you're going with this, but at the end, do you still rank them kids? Because you're going to, you're going to be figuring the grade points system anyway, I mean, you might have five that falls in the higher class where you usually have one or two, do you still rank them, like, you're the top five, or like, you're number one of the five, you're number two of the five, you're number three?
I would think so, we don't, we do follow that. I mean, I don't think that, that top, I mean, it's not going, if you're on a five-point scale, it's not going to be a five-point old to a four-point old, it's going to be, as Mr. Towns said, I would think it would be real strict, if you're on a four-point scale, you know, three point nine old to four is, is the top, I mean, you, that's, that's, you know, if you do that, you're going to limit lots of kids.
I thought you would say, these kids met this criteria somewhere, but they met this criteria, and then these kids met this criteria somewhere.
You know, and, 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 and these people have been doing it longer at the high school than I have, but I found out last year, people who give scholarships, they look as mu, look as much at community service criteria. A lot of times, if they, if they've got a kid that's four-point old and he's, that's all he's done, was academics, and he can't get around and socialize and work with people, they'll tend to go to that kid who's a three-point five average and has all these hours of community service and all this volunteer work, so I think we have to do a good job of educating the parents and communicating with parents on things of how scholarships are actually done and how things are done in the future, as far as they're concerned with getting monies and, and continuing on, so.
Colleges look at that too.
Yeah. Yes. And I'll take, I'll say this, and Dr. Oldham, who's the president of Tennessee Tech, said in a, in the conference room at Gwarson High School last year, and he was talking about CNA classes and how competitive it was to get into nursing school. And he said, you need to sell your parents on that a CNA class at TCAT is important for a kid who needs to get into nursing school, because when they're interviewing to get into nursing school, they're, they won't know that person is committed, because they're taking a slot from someone who is, if they're not committed, so he says those folks who have, I mean, that's either going to happen in physical therapy to try to, if they're in that medical field, if they've got a certification from TCAT and they still go to college and they apply to nursing school, that's something they can put on a resume to say, hey, I'm, I'm committed to this field. So as Tim said, just this year at Gwarson High School, we had two kids or three, Ms. Bobby, I think they couldn't, they couldn't get into the CNA because they were competing for dual enrollment, things with, so, and then we had some that, you know, their parents don't want them to do it because they don't think it's going to help them in the future. So we, when we get to that vow and sale distinction, these, those kids are not, they're going to that five-point class instead of that CNA class, which may keep them from getting into nursing school when they try to apply at Tennessee Tech. So that's four, five, six years down the road.
Well, I have that kid living in my home that, you know, didn't take that CNA class because she was going to lose points, and, you know, she's wanting to be in nursing school.
And I don't think that's good for, I don't think that's good for students and parents to be led that way, that, that, because a vow and sale's good, but trying to get into nursing school is a lot more important than.
Yeah, but we had, we had a conversation about that, about what's more important, you know, and, you know, which, you know, she's like, I, I need, I want to be in the top ten more than I want that CNA, and now that she's at tech, you know, she's like, I wish if I had that CNA certificate, I could get a job at the hospital, but because I couldn't, you know, she's in that, you know, dilemma. But, you know, we've had to make those kind of decisions. The other issue that, that we had too was because she was an athlete, it was really difficult to get her in every class that these non-athletes can take, and so that's a, that's also a problem. And I understand the tradition, certainly, because, and I, and the stress, I was tenth in my class, I was probably a hundredth away from being eleven. And, you know, so I understand the stress that these kids, you know, go through and have all that going on, so, and it's a lot, Scotty's got, yeah, Scotty's got, Scotty's got one in it too, and so it's really, it is stressful. But I'm not for, I'm not for recognizing, you know, everybody get a trophy kind of situation, the kids that are taking these dual enrollment classes, because that is hard.
It's hard.
It is, and I really didn't understand it that much until I watched my own child go through it, and you realize, wow, that's a tremendous amount of work, you know, on the weekends, late at night, you know, every Sunday night, you know, you've got assignments due in there, you're watching them work, and that's not the same as somebody who's just flubbing through, you know, high school, and I got one of those living at my house too, you know, so, I mean, I've got, I've got two different, you know, two different kids, but, you know, one, you know, is working hard and the other's just, you know, getting by, and I, I see that, both sides of that, but, you know, it definitely is a stressful situation, it creates stress for the kids. And I don't think that kids, having kids, I mean, life is stressful, I mean, okay, so I don't have a problem with putting stress on kids, because that's, that's part of being accountable as an adult, but I don't think that, I think we could go about it in a different way that might be more effective, and allow us to recognize kids that do just as well, but their number didn't just hap, didn't come up in the top ten, it doesn't mean that they're not, you know, successful students. Because we had, I know at Smith County last year, probably the top eighteen or twenty or so would have probably been recognized if we had been on a, you know, Latin system. That's not too sense, anyway. It's authentic.
Is anybody just, I, I mean, I know we can't vote on this, it's just a discussion, but is there anybody on the board that's just totally against this? They've got enough things to do, the reason I'm asking, they've got enough to do to not dive into this if it's not going to be worthy of their time. I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to look at myself, but I.
I think, yeah, I'm with Scotty on this one, I think the benefit of just one is worth, is worth looking into.
I think that, you know, that there needs to, you know, obviously a lot more research that needs to be done in, in figuring out a system. I think the transparency to the parents and to these eighth graders, if that's what, you know, if that ends up happening, is imperative, so that they understand that they're not being recognized less than prior graduating classes, that it's, you know, that, you know, it's all in how you deal with it, and I think the transparency portion, you know, and, and piece of that's going to be really important.
The idea is great, you've just got to perfect the process, however you want to do it.
So we just, I guess, direct you to get.
Do you want us to start putting some stuff together, maybe talk to some colleges and try to align with them, but, but like Robby said, I think, one, that the average person should be able to sit down, and I should be able to take my child and go with that handbook and be able to figure where Tucker's, Tucker's at.
And you can, and currently, you can't do that, I mean, I know that with, with my own child, you can't.
The average person can, but it's not enough, or you can short an accountant or even work in the system, and I think, that's the other thing, I think, I won't, like Shane said, I think there's some catch, she's in there about the courses, it's more advantageous for those of us who know in the system, and it's our advantageous, if you can afford it, and I, that's fair to every. it, and I, but that's fair to every child, I want that.
Could you set it up, could you set up in a book, like when you go to college, like they have, I know, but they still have that now, and I'm, so-
It's online.
But it was, but it, it was a book, you know, you went in, and it told you, you had steps to go through to get to where you wanted to go.
Right.
I think that could be done, and I think it could be more laid out, more realistic, and more understandable, transparent, I think that's the main thing.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very difficult, because you, you know, you take the classes, and, you know, we looked at that, I mean, that's really difficult.
Well, and we've even talked about one thing, I think, we're probably gonna start this year doing, for no more than a cost, to release some pressure on these people, is to have an accountant figured at the end, because in that way, even though some here at office figured it, and guidance counselors, and we have certified accountants for no more what you're talking, that really is gonna make everybody feel better.
So let's-
We'll, we'll get a plan, start a plan.
We'll get a, start a plan, everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank y'all for the, for, for input, looking into this, appreciate it. Discussion B, this is a progressive pay plan for all employees, this was brought up per request of Mr. Lewis, and-
Well, and, and, yes, sir, I do, I, I guess I want to start out by saying, maybe I should apologize a little bit, this is a pretty big elephant in the room, and, and I haven't been sitting in this chair long enough to get it warm yet, so, you know, I'm kind of running right out here and throwing a block in the pond, but, this is something that's really close to my heart, and, and it's something that's been close to my heart for a long time, I, I've grown up in a teaching family, so to speak, and what I would like to ask is, number one, I, I do not feel like our employees are, are paid where they need to be, um, I've, I've done a lot of research myself, a lot of analysis, that and the other, I've got a pretty fair idea of where we are in this state, um, pay-wise, and, and I don't, I don't think it's anywhere close to where it needs to be, now, I don't have a solution for that, but, coming towards with this, I, I think with anything, you know, you gotta make the first step with it to try to start doing something, and, and I think that the board members feel the same way as I do about it, not just teachers, but all of our employees, I mean, the, the custodians or the people serving lunches every day, and I, I'm not gonna make a big full-blown impassioned plea, I'll do that later, uh, when we get, before we can talk some about it, but, what I would like to ask, um, is that maybe Director Smith be allowed to get some figures together, to see where we factually are in comparison with like counties, now, I know we've got several counties that touch us, no, we can't do what West County does, we don't, they have a very dissimilar tax base from, from what we have here, but, but like counties, very similar counties, and, and see where we stand, and then bring that back to us, and what I'd like to talk about is something progressive in nature, what we can do to try to, uh, attain a level of where we would like to be with our employees, not, you know, I'm, I'm all for, I'm all for every penny that our employees can give, um, I make that plan, but, but I, I don't think we're doing a good service of a, a two percent here, or maybe three or four years down the road, a three percent or something, what I, what I'd like to see us do is something progressive, a little bit at a time, to kind of reach a level, uh, of where, and that way, everybody feels kind of like they know where they're going, and if they do a good job, they got something to look towards the next year, this, that, and the other, and, and of course, if it becomes something that we talk about, you know, then we can talk about what would prevent you from getting that as well, if you didn't do a good job, and things like that, but, I would just like to see us kind of get started, and I, we all, we just set a budget, and, and we're just into a brand-new fiscal year and everything, but you gotta start sometime, and, and, you know, if, if there's other board members have comments and things, I, I think that's awesome, but, you know, I, I want us to, I'll say it to you like this, uh, I, I believe with all my heart, and you've heard this said a bazillion times in your lives, and I'm not trying to be cliche, I really truly believe this, our children, if you drive by any school, and I drive by Forts River School, because that's my school, it's where I live, I see those babies out in the yard playing, and that's my future, that's my senior in high school's future, playing out there in that yard, I think we all agree on that, they're, that's the future of our community, of our nation, right there, walking around, but I, I would say that the teacher you see in the middle of them, or that custodian you see over there, patting one on the back, smiling, or the one that you see put the food in their tray, or, they're integral to that child's future, they're with them, how many hours a day, how many hours a week, how many hours a month, and they guide them every step, just like we do as parents at home, they're just as important, the things they add, I could sit right here in this chair right now and tell you, the teacher when I was in high school, uh, four years, that, that made the biggest imprint in my life, that, that, that made me make decisions, not that he is aware of, but the things he taught us about, and I use phrase he used, intestinal fortitude, have the intestinal fortitude to do the right thing, have the guts to do the right thing, you know who I'm talking about right now, don't you? But, they're important, and, and I want us to have the best of the best in those classrooms with our children, because our children are our future, and I want us to be as competitive as, as we can possibly be, and of course, remember, I'm not trying to put anybody in a hard place, I'm just saying, but, you know, everything that we can do, even if it's in a progressive nature, and I, I think progressive is good, we did that with the state, when I worked down there, kind of started right here, kind of knew where he was going, a little at a time, did the train stay on track every year, well, no, it didn't, but we were heading somewhere, you know what I mean, kind of had a plan, kind of had a path, people working there, kind of had an idea of what we were doing, and I'd just like to see us do something so that when we've got people who are talented and skilled and, and grew up here, um, and all those things, that we want to come back here and do something in this community, make a difference with our children, that, that we can afford to have them here, and not lose them somewhere else, because I, I think it makes a difference in the lives of our children, so, I said a one, gonna make an impassioned plea, I guess that somewhat is one, but, um, it's really close to my heart, you know, I'll, I'll briefly tell you a story, I'll tell you what strikes so close to me, of course, my dad was at Forts River School, everybody knows that, you know, and he got hurt in an accident, all that stuff, um, and, and was at bed, really long time, a lot of medical bills and lost surgeries, this, that, and the other, do you know who paid those doctor bills? He'd been employed at the school system for a long time, Carthy Shirt Factory, why? My mama worked there, and the guy that owned it had enough foresight to recognize that his employees needed to be taken care of, so they had insurance, my daddy didn't have any, so even back that far back, you know, just thinking about your employees and thinking about how important it is to do that little bit at a time, makes a difference, made a difference in our lives, you know, so, if everybody else is okay with it, or, or whatever, I'd, I'd like to ask the director to just get some facts and figures of exactly where we are, let's talk about, you know, apples and apples, not apples and bananas, and, and see where we are as a school system with all of our employees, and then I'll sit down and, and see if we can formulate a plan on how we could look towards moving forward, improving that progressively, I don't care if we talk about a three-year period at a time, or a five-year period at a time, but something, you know, not, not just, you know, we'll do the best we can in three percent this year, maybe four, five years, we'll come up with two percent more, or something, but let's, let's try to move forward with some kind of plan, um, and I, I guess I'm kind of done, and, and we'll leave that to anybody else, Director, if you, I didn't mean to cut you off, I knew I wanted you to talk about it, too, but-
Well, I want you to ask before, if you want me to kind of put a study together of what the county's around, and then bring it back, and that, that'll be our base point start.
Right.
I'm, I'm a bad habit to say teachers, but it needs to be staff, it needs to be-
Right.
Maybe see what EA's you're making, and that, and then bus drivers, cooks, and we'll go from there, let's, and try to get you some information back when we get back.
Well, like you said, you said bus drivers, how hard a time do we have keeping bus drivers? You know, how difficult is it for us to keep-
And, and it is, but now, like that, every county touches us on trouble, you know, it'll mean a bit.
They will, and, and I know that there will be people that will say, you know, well, they know what this job pays when they take it, well, that, that's true, and I know that there'll be a thought process out there of, um, you know, this department pays this, or this government agency pays that, or whatever, and all those things are well and good, um, you know, we're representing the school system, so that's, that's the agency I'm interested in, is the employees that work for the school system, and, you know, at the end of the day, really interested folks, you know, we ask a lot of them, that's a lot of time, energy, education, money, and everything else spent to go do their job every day, and, and I mean, I'll just say this, too, a lot of them spend a lot of money out of their pockets in that classroom all the time, I mean, a lot of money in the run of a year, so, you know, I, again, I'm not asking for us to move heaven and earth, I'm not asking for us to redo a budget, or repaint the, uh, tapestry of the universe, or anything like that, but, I, I want us to make an effort and make a step, and, and see where we are, and then talk about what we can do, um, and go from there, is that fair enough?
Think we were semi-going that direction, anyway, I mean, we, we give raise this year, and we're going to kind of look at it and try to do again next year, we were, we were already kind of-
Good.
Heading in that direction.
But, but this will-
It'd be nice to know what the surrounding-
Yeah, know what the surrounding counties, it would be nice to know.
Well, we're competing with them, you know, we're losing people, or, or trying to gain people from them, this, that, and the other, so if we're gonna be in competition with them, we already know where we're standing in all time.
I think what we're gonna find is we're more, more in line, which, our teachers aren't paid what they deserve, uh, for certain, and I don't think any teacher in the state is, not just here in this county, but anywhere, but, um, you know, I think we're gonna find that our teachers are probably better compensated than some of the other positions, like an EA position, uh, that is, that's gonna be, I think, further out of line than our teacher salaries.
It may well be, but at least if we have this come back to us, we'll know where we're standing on every facet of it, and, and then we'll know to act on this, act on that, not act on something, act a little bit on this one, or a little, you, you know, it'll give us some kind of idea, we've gotta have a playing field, a level playing field to start with, or, it's my thought, now, if somebody disagrees with that, I'm fine with that, too, but, I just, uh, if something's close to my heart, and I, I'd just like to address if we, we've got a lot of people out there that do a good job every night.
We're, we're fairly close, and we're way out of line, and probably everybody.
Well, that, and, but I think the most, I think the biggest impact is-
But we got some, it's, it's unbelievable, I mean-
Yeah, we have some that I don't even know how they buy groceries, and, I'm sure, I'm sure that we don't, we have some that probably by the time they pay their benefits, nearly need to write us a check.
Exactly.
And that's sad.
It is sad.
We've got some that take insurance, just gotta write the check.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah.
For sure.
But I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Director, thank you.
We'll get you some, it's a start point, we'll get some, start a study, and, and we're gonna have that when we research, when we start planning, so.
Exactly, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
I can't wait to hear your impassioned plea.
I'm pretty proud of those folks, I'm not gonna lie about it, because I'm passionate about our kids.
We'll move on to discussion C, uh, this is Department of School Board members serve on the sick leave bank committee, we had a vacant seat, do we have anybody that wants to volunteer for that position, and I believe, Ms. Moore, you're on it right now, we need another member.
This is, I mean, no, how many counts you get to meet on that, Robby, and, it's not, you think it's-
Two or, two or three, it's not too, too time-intensive, I will tell you that if you have some knowledge of, uh, our background, it does help to understand, you know, what is fair, what is not fair, if you've got some, some kind of history with managing employees or something like that, it, it would certainly help in, in that situation, because we have had that situation come up with what is fair and what is not fair, um, you know, and you have to take that in consideration, not necessarily what you want to do, but what, you have to do what's fair.
You said two or three times, did you say, mean, two or three times, in twelve months?
It has come up two or three times in the last twelve months, yes.
Any volunteers?
Don't everybody jump at once.
Are you staying on it?
Yeah.
I'll volunteer, I've got some-
It's, it's not, I mean, you might go two years, not-
You just get an email.
I've, I've got experience, but I'll volunteer.
Okay, that'd be good, Mr. Lewis will be our other member, um, I don't think it's anything we have to vote on, it's just, Mr. Lewis and Ms. Moore will be our members on the sick leave committee. Okay, no more discussion on that. We've got our annual policy review for October, and, did you see, those are the Septembers, we actually needed Octobers, and we've got them here.
They're for next month, have enough that we pack it.
Yes, so, we might have to double up. Okay, that's right, they, they're a stay of month, that's right, they're a stay of month, I'm sorry, okay, did anybody have any questions on the September policies?
What is, just bring me up to speed real quick, Brian, if you don't care, but, since I'm new on the board and don't understand what's going on, what is, um, just bring me up to speed real quick, what this does?
We have to do an annual policy review, now, you can do it one time, but if you've ever looked at that book-
It's a two-day deal.
And tried to sit down and do it, it's just, it's, it's, it's really intense, so, what we had decided to do to, to equal that to an annual policy review, was to take these monthly and go through, like, these were September's policies, so we could go through and look, look through the, just these policies, some months we don't have any policy, I mean, you saw where, I think maybe last month, we didn't have any, but some months we do have more, look through those, and it, it's just, all is a review, if you see something that jumps out at you on one of the policies, like, whoa, wait a minute.
So that we set these policies, or they're, the, how, how are they set, like, let's just look at this one, use of cellular phones, so what, how would I know what's going on with that?
If you have a state mandated policy, and then the local board of education can either, it's easily go over it, but you have a minimum guideline set by the state, and ever, if we decided, you know, the state says no cell phones in the school hours, well, that's what the law is, and we might say no cell phones on football fields or buses, you add to your policy. And we, we hire, Tennessee School Board Association monitors all our policies, and you see that in some of your packages, where they've amended and recommended change and all this stuff, and we vote on it, so they're kind of overlooking our policies, but you're required by law, every, every local school district board is required by law, once a year now, it used to be once every two year, I believe.
Once a year.
Once a year now, you have to go over every one of your policies and make sure they're lining up with the way they're supposed to, and make sure they, you know, something obsolete, you don't use them, or you get it out of them, but, uh-
This keeps us in line.
We've sat down before and done the whole book, and you don't want to do that.
No, you don't.
You don't want to do that, and what he does is, he gives you these po- policies, Marty, and you can go online if you want to, or you can go to the book.
But you can see, if you go online, that, you can go right to-
Board policy.
Board policies, and then, you know, you can look through.
It's another one of those things, you're not gonna vary, right, but it, it's a way to make you have to read it, is what it basically is, which you gotta understand.
So the, so the night, we're, are we gonna say, are we gonna make a motion and vote on these tonight?
No, no, what, what would happen-
We're just reviewing them?
When, when you got your, when you got your-
There it is.
Right, when you got your book, you would, you would essentially, you would look through these policies.
Right.
And if you saw one- If you saw one that looked, like, something didn't look exactly right, or something you had a question about, then, we would put this on the next agenda, as to review that policy, if there's a question, if we had to change something in it, something needed to be changed, we'd have it on the next agenda, normally, we don't have any changes in these, because these are pretty much from TSBA, and we have already adopted these policies, but there could be something, I mean, there's, there's stuff pops out.
Things change, you know.
And things change, and we can review any policy at any time, you know, and make a change if necessary, and sometimes things come up, and, or laws change, and we have to, you know, do that, but-
It's like that amendment we talked about last time.
Right.
It's, it's just part of the three basic things for a school board, we have three, three things we, we got control on, hiring a director of school, he works for us, passing the fiscal budget, and making policies, that's our policy.
That's, that's, that's-
That's all we can do, we don't hire, we don't fire, we make policies, we hire anyone, we accept the budget. And grant it.
So these policies are in the handbook, that?
They're our, they're our school policies, of course, it's, it's easier online to look at them, but those-
You just type the number.
And, like I said, the Tennessee School Board Association basically monitors these policies, and you see it, you vote on it, you will, you will be seeing it, but we have to do, they have changed the- But we have to do, they have changed the word, or they say the state's changed this.
We had some last month where stat- state statutes had changed, so that affected our policy. And so, and then Gina always puts in there that this is a change in the law, a change in the statute, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So, we really don't have a choice but to take it, really, there with Gina.
That's right.
It's not something you can, like, Thomas, it's way out of bounds because if they're going to kick it out so that it won't work.
Yeah.
And our agenda always includes a copy of the current policy and a copy of the proposed change. So, that way you can see what it looked like and what the suggested change is. And we can deviate from what, you know, the state policy recommendations are or what TSBA recommends, but generally, it's not a good idea to do that. And they're...
You should go below their minimum.
You can't. Go below their, their minimum. We have to maintain it, or, or we can, but they're going to cut our funding off.
Yeah.
So, we review these. This keeps us in line of what we're supposed to. We just, instead of doing it at one time, we, we take it in little chunks instead of one big one.
Is this, is this something you were looking at, Mr. Smith, like, these re- these policies? Is this something that's sort of over your head that you've got to really stay on, or is it just pretty well...
Well, they're, they're basically sent to us in a recommendation. And so, we most of the time go rec- go over what the recommendation is, because they're not going to let us get out of that.
Right.
And the policy is, our, our job as board members, that's not, I mean, Mr. Smith certainly has an input, input, but the policy, setting policy falls to the discretion of the board.
Okay.
And if we send something back to them as an amended policy that's, that's not...
They don't have to agree with it?
Yeah. They, they send us back a note and says, this is, you can't do this.
And this is just, I mean, this is just our rule, this is the school rules, is what it amounts to. And they'll eventually be, if you've got a question, it, it's in a, should be in a policy somewhere.
Right.
Should be an answer.
The T S, TSBA also has staff attorneys and they have lobbyists that deal with the legislature. So, they, they know exactly what's going on.
So, just to make it real quick, I know we're probably running over, I guess. But do they give us any variances of school dates? Variances on school dates starting when you want, when we want...
The teachers say...
Yeah, we like the school days, for example, what we do, they give us forever. They've got to start no later than this and can end no later than this. You're going to get 180 days in that.
So, we figure it out here as our own policy on board.
We can get all that over, we could go and not have a vacation. But what we do, this particular administration, what we've done, we do surveys. And 99% of it is done directly, whether I agree, Gina agrees, we, we've always, we have a group that comes in and represents the calendar committee. We will guide them within the laws of, of what you're asking, okay? And then we pretty much have went by that calendar committee, I've been proud of it. And they went by what the teaching or the staff as a whole is wanting to do, as long as it met those days and so on.
Okay.
We let, we, we let the staff.
We've never made a change since I've been on the board in six years of what they recommended.
I mean, they, they stay in the law and that's how they want to do their breaks.
Okay.
Okay.
Melody.
I met with him last week, so it'll be in the board pack next month.
For next year's 1920, okay. That sounds about 1920.
What she said in here, what she said...
That we'll have the calendar about 1920 school year next month.
1999. I didn't say 1920.
She could have left that part off there.
Any more questions on... Okay. We do have an update from the building committee. Mr. Manning, if you want.
Uh, building committee met with Mr. Rose, uh, last Tuesday, Wednesday, what, Wednesday night. And we very appreciate Mr. Rose's time to meet with us. And I know Ricky was there, Davis was there, I was there. Marty, you come in.
Yeah.
And, and Ryan was there, and Terrence.
Joe was here.
Joe was here, of course, we had some, a couple county commissioners, County Mayor and Presses, Shane was here. Got to talk to Mr. Rose. Uh, we just had a few questions, Marty, basically, and he, he answered our questions. Now, if I speak out loud, y'all stop and make sure. Uh, the question I, the main question that the board had for him was his definition of a full campus high school. And his definition of a full campus high school was a state-of-the-art high school with, uh...
Sports facilities.
For sports facilities, football field, baseball field, softball field, agricultural, CT, you know, just normal, basic, full campus high school. Uh, we also asked the question, would he be willing to just do the high school? And his answer was no. We did ask, you know, at the time, you know, we, we weren't for sure, we needed a high school. Would he be willing to let us build another kind of school, whether a middle school or a mentor school? And his answer was no. And, uh, in his, in his, in his vision, and, and, and I have to agree with him on this. Uh, when you come into a small community, the first thing you really want to see is the nice high school. That's, that's the place where people, people go, that's where you go for the ball games, that's, you know, that's, that's the, the, the eye catcher of a community. And that's kind of what he was leaning for. He, he wanted a full campus high school, footland, and, uh, that's basically our answer. Now, he was agreeable for some of the timeframes may be negotiable. And when I'm talking about timeframes, we have not signed a contract with him yet, okay? And he did give us a timeframe to sign the contract, or he's pointed it out. Did he not say that?
I heard that, or...
I thought he said, well, you're going to sign. Uh, you know, once we, we enter, we have 12 months to go to the county court if we decide to proceed with this and secure funding for this. Now, he did say, you know, 12 months wasn't enough, you know, he'd be willing a little bit to tweak it. And then so forth, some other timeframes.
The question was put, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Question was put for, before, you know, if you had the instructional side of the, of the school and then a phase in or, or the actual information, or side of it. He seemed to be someone I hoped that I did, but I think he was very limited to operating down that. Certainly, it'd be a number of years, even certainly, there was something different.
But he, he did say it on the full campus school.
It's the impression I got.
Yeah, that's the impression that I got.
Mm-hmm. But he said, like, you could do the school and then, and phase, except for phasing it. But that's what he was, that's, he said that's what his vision was, you know.
I had in my mind that we had to do something by, like, March of next year. Is that just an imaginary something, or is that...
We have assigned it, it's not, that was clear about the matter.
That's what we were starting to talk about, that's what we were trying to say.
We haven't signed nothing yet.
Okay. Well, that, I knew that that March statement, okay.
That's when we entered in to talk, the discussion.
Okay. I knew that there, that was out there somewhere, but I couldn't, I couldn't remember exactly what it, what it was.
Well, not cutting you off, but that meeting was not an official meeting of the school board. In defense of Mr. Scotty, he wasn't here, so...
I wasn't either. I was in New Orleans.
So, are we moving...
Well, that's the next question, Marty. The next question is, how does this board want to move? Uh, does the board want to move on, on to, to enter into negotiation? Or I'll tell you what I recommend, and, and just as sitting as chairman of the building committee. I think we need to meet with the county commissioners or the building...
The, the education committee.
Education department, and just question them. And just maybe put it out there and say, what do you think?
But, because for, for them, if you do this, you've got to buy two more pieces of property.
I certainly think the first thing you better find out is what are the other two pieces of property that we're proposing.
You've got to buy the five acres there and then you've got to have seven to eight down here on the low side.
Ten would grab it.
So, that, that's all.
Yeah, that's, that's probably the next thing before you meet, and say, hey, we don't meet.
Yeah. That's, that's probably the first thing we need to find out is what the price tag is on those two, two properties. If it's even for sale.
Yeah, before we even meet, and if, if it is, then maybe we sit down and talk to them. And then before we do anything else.
I mean, we need, that's probably the first thing we need to know.
I think you need to have, with it, it's five.
Yep. You got to have a place to build before you start.
Yeah. We, we need to know that before any, before anything.
I think we know that one of them is for sale and maybe not for sale.
We just don't know a price tag.
Right. And, yeah, exactly.
That, that's the first thing I think we need to find out.
Mr. Winker, would you reach out to Mr. Rose and make sure? I, I was thinking sometime during the meeting, I heard that, that the offer would not stay on the table forever. He did make some...
He did make that statement, but he didn't make a timeline, I don't think.
No, he did, he made an emphasis, that he would like to see this progressing, that he would like to do something.
As long as you're making, as long as you're doing something to progress, like, like you said, trying to acquire, rest, rest that property or whatever, or survey or something, he's probably, I feel like he's good with it. He used to want to just sit there, sit there, sit there two or three years, and we sit there, stewing, well, if we do this, we can do that.
Well, we just, we just need to know first what it's going to cost to get those, if they're even...
The church has to go to, it has to go outside locally, it's got to go to, like, North Carolina or something, and they, they have done that, okay? They've not come back. And then Shane, you've actually talked to Ms. Agee or some of her family, got correct?
I've talked to Ms. Agee, um, Ms. Sylvia's husband, he's a real driver, he's a county... He's supposed to, he told me they was willing to sell. Uh, he kind of wanted us to, to us like words. And I said, well, I don't think the board's going to go that route. You need to tell us what you want for it. So, he said he was going to do some research. That's been three, three, four weeks ago. So, I haven't called him back. I've just kind of liked to see what...
I know, man.
Give me permission, like you did, if I asked to, to try to be aggressive on those two properties, I will say, what's the...
Everybody good with giving permission, yeah.
I mean, you got to do that, or you go anywhere, see whether that's even realistic.
And then, then you need to be looking at your pump station and what...
Do you want me to go that far to get a, a rough estimate of what it's going to cost to get utilities, that property is a pump? Or you want to wait and see about the properties first?
We probably want to find out properties first. I mean, you can't do, if you can't get both properties or if they're astronomical prices.
Don't want anything that you get that.
Right.
Hey, Mr. Smith, I, I will say, Mr. Stein, I think Stein, Stein Stein, he was, the way I took you, he was open, Ms. Agee was open, the Agee family was open to sell more. I mean, he even questioned me about land they got on the other side of, uh, the bypass there, 30, 40 acres. So, I think they're open to selling more than as much as the school system needs, um, I guess, in conversation. But he has not got a motive.
Here's the thing, I've done a lot of research. There's a lot of properties, and I think, Tom, you know, I know Shane knows, because we kind of, there's a lot of properties that look a whole lot better than either piece, but there's probably two pieces in Gordonville that's realistic, and you build them right now, you get your hands on one of them.
Yeah.
You talking about other than this one?
There's a lot that looks good, but won't work for various reasons.
The, the public opinion is, I think, that we are holding the two worst choices.
There's a lot, yeah, we got, and, and they are, if you look at it, I feel the same way, well, that, you think, well, that farm, that... When you talk about what it's going to cost to get utilities and stuff, it's not, don't think, you see the numbers come in.
I didn't see anybody else wanting to come and give us property though, did you?
No.
No. And, and the, the free, free, the property comes with about a $400,000 price tag because of the utilities.
Then it makes the, makes you have a, uh, $400,000 piece of property worth probably between one, 1.2 million dollars.
And I think when you get that, that's what you got to, what is it worth to sell another piece back off it? But, or is it keeping it, or is it, can, can these other pieces even be bought, you know?
We just, we just need to look first if we can even purchase those.
Do that, I'll get, kind of be aggressive on that.
Give you permission to, to look at those two properties. And then we can get into whether we even need a new high school, whether we need what we need and what the utilities is going to cost. This, this, when we get something, we can go with the education committee with, we can, we have, we need some numbers to go with.
No, but did you just say that whether, if we do need a school or not, or I misheard you?
Yeah, we had, um...
What, what kind of school?
What kind of school?
It may be a middle school, it may, we may benefit from them.
These up there will do studies and come back and say, you need a K4, you need a 4H, you need a 912, is it what?
Didn't we ha- we had somebody here that did that.
That's who were entering a contract with on other property, they, they can do that, they'll, they'll come out and do a study and tell you what they would recommend.
Yeah, and it has more to do with, like, they had, they talked about the different types of attendants you had, you know, or...
Where the growth is.
Capacity, yeah. Where the capacity is, but not only that, but, you know, because of your, your core part of the building. I remember it was like cafeteria, your restrooms, your gymnasiums. You couldn't grow a, a particular building past a certain point because the core part of the building would not...
Whatever you build, be a recommendation, I mean, you make your cafeteria, gymnasium, you make that thing hug.
Right.
So that you can build wings off for the future, and be very minimal to the county with management.
But make your core be able to handle about twice as much classroom space.
If you can keep adding wings on at minimal cost for your gymnasiums, your cafeteria, uh, office space, parking space. And, and then, then it's very minimal going forward, or you just build a wing now for more kids.
Right.
All right. And we know where we're headed with that first, and then, then we'll get back, hoping maybe next, next month or the month after, figure out where we're at.
We, we've been, I hope we can get at least time for that.
Okay. Safety committee, any updates?
No, we probably need to set a time, um, though, to meet. I'd like to do that. And, um, and maybe bring in, um, at least, uh, Sergeant Stewart and just kind of get an update of what's going on. And, because we've made a lot of changes with the SROs and adding in that. So, we, we probably need to sit, I probably need to figure out, but let me talk to Sergeant Stewart and see what his schedule looks like and then...
Come to the next meeting with a, with a date or something. Some, or a couple of dates where people might be a little flustered.
Some things we're doing, uh, uh, obviously, we can't, we can't discuss, but we, if you looked at New Middleton, have you seen the new fence out there? We really got, now, all the children contained and even behind the building. We're going to do the same thing in the near future, Forks River, that plan is underway. Uh, we've also purchased, for three of the schools, actually, the fourth, the new motorola 2 watt, better radios that each one of our schools now will have. And through the best garage, too, we, the repeaters waiting for FCC license so that that five watt will hook up now and will have complete coverage across the county, bearing a cellphone. Big for defeated, for true, you guys.
Good, good.
Five watts is a lot.
All right. Any need for executive session? I've got some reminders before we...
Make sure, on reminder unit, right there, that, uh, insert...
Well, time, I've got about eight reminders, wait just a timeout. Chromebooks, where did Ms. Bybee go? Um, she said, she talked to...
Ms. Angel.
Ms. Angel.
Chromebook.
And we're about two to one right now, or some schools are almost one to one, but most are about two to one. And we've got the numbers broke down, uh...
Well, New Middleton, I don't know. GES and New Middleton are the closest to the one to one ratio. And then your other K8 schools are right behind them with, uh, one chromebook per two students. Your high schools are a little bit lagging.
And that's due to the Title I money, they don't get Title I money. So, that's why we've purchased quite a bit of chromebooks from you. So, that, that's where we're at now. November, everybody remember, we moved the November meeting up to the 13th because of the Thanksgiving break. School board retreat, I've got reminders for everybody, that's going to be January the 17th. And we need to know if everybody has to be here. Are y'all just going to pass them around? We're leaving one for Joe's stuff there. It will be on the 17th.
Start on my, fine.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday. We have a TSB annual leadership conference. It's, uh, November 1st, November 2nd. If anybody's interested, it's at the Gaylord Opera Lane, I believe. I went a couple of years ago. If you're interested, you need to get with Ms. Tracy, does she set this up?
Yes, we can, or...
Or you, or whoever, okay. Just get with, with, uh, Ms. Gina, Ms. Tracy, if you're interested in doing that. It's not a mandatory thing, it's just if, if you want to do it, here's some, if you want to read something about it. Yeah, it was a lot like your, when you went down there and met with TSBA, when you got in a room, it was kind of just an open forum type deal of what I went through of it. Um, we also need to get with Ms. Tracy, everybody needs to schedule a fingerprint. And we've decided that it's ever, it's mandatory, school board employees, and we're all employees of the school board, so... And we're all employees of the school board. So, so-
Fingerprinting when you need to have it done by?
I don't, there's not a have to be done by day.
Well, you're gonna be in a five year cycle once it starts, so, every, within a, every five years. And so, it would be good to get it though.
Just come by your own free time and get it done.
Uh, if you're, she can tell you, she can schedule.
Do we have to go somewhere?
Yes, you have to go to Lebanon or Quoobal, Mount Juliet.
Can't go to Sheriff's Department? One in Lebanon, that's one at Castle High, on Castle High Avenue.
I have been to that one. Is the one in Orlando, you went to the one in Lebanon to get your fingerprint?
Hi, Brian. Who do we say, who do we say over here?
Ms. Tracy Bright. She'll say to you.
Don't waste time.
I went to the one in Quoobal, when he said to make more.
You call, you call or it don't, it-
It was as easy as, they got a thirty second wings. Over Great Park and-
Yeah, that's why I was coming over, railroad over there. Oh, okay.
Okay. I believe that's all the reminders. Did you have something else? Or did it, was that it, fingerprint? Do you have any more questions, anything else needs to be?
I'd just like to thank my wife for coming. She hadn't been aboard late. I talked her into coming tonight. I told her it wouldn't last thirty minutes or forty-five minutes.
You've had it when you get home.
Do we just bring the receipt to y'all or where do they have it sent to? Or we gotta have an address to have it sent to?
Yeah, let me, I'll send you an email. How's that? I'll send you an email.
All right. That email address you gave me, where do you go to get that? I mean, is it a special place, special wealth?
Smith Co., N D U? Yeah, I'll get with you after the meeting.
Okay.
I'll send you an email.
She'll send it, Ms. Gina will send the email back to fingerprint. Any other questions or anything that needs to come for the board?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manning, last second, Mr. Apple, all in favor, say aye.